All right, it's 6:30, so I'll call the July meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board of Morrisville to order. Any changes on the agenda? So, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
All right, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Has everybody had a chance to look over the minutes from last month? Any changes or remarks? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
That was Ken. Second?
I second.
Sanjay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And so we are not, just to clarify, we don't need to do the roll call anymore. Oh. Okay, so with all the changes, who are the alternates now, I guess?
Both alternates.
Okay, both of you. And I don't remember who the last person was, it's been back in, I think last time both were voters, so.
Actually, I think the last one where we had an alternate, I think I was the alternate.
I'll be your alternate.
Okay. Chris will be the alternate. Okay, so I guess we can move ahead with the presentations.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Again, I think I've met some of you, but maybe not all of you. I'm Brandon Zudema, I'm the Assistant Town Manager. I've been asked to share some information with you tonight about the bond referendum that the town is going to hold on November 2nd of this year. So let me see if I can get that up here. All right, and again, I'm fairly obviously not Jeanie Hooks. Several of us are sharing her presentation, so bear with me on that one. Again, what we'd like to do is just take a few minutes tonight to share some information with you about our bond referendum for this fall. I'm going to talk to you about getting the word out and how you might help us with that, give you an overview of what that process looks like, if you're not already familiar with it, happy to take any questions about that, and then just any other questions you may have about where we're headed with this. So in terms of getting the word out, obviously because a bond referendum is a vote, we want to make sure that we educate the public as much as possible about what the referendum is and what we're asking to do. It does involve a potential tax increase, so it's important that our residents and voters understand what the referendum is about. So we are going to get the word out, but we are also going to ask many of our partners to potentially advocate for this bond. So we, as the local government, cannot advocate for a yes vote, we can just advocate for a vote. We want folks to come out and vote on this on November 2nd. What we will ask groups such as yourself and some of our civic organizations and others to do is to potentially, assuming that you would support the bonds, would be to advocate for that support from other voters in the community. Also, we are working through engagement and education, so we have several portals available for that. We have conducted some open houses both here and over at MAFC within the last couple of months. We have tried to be present at different community events, as we have finally started to see those come back again. And I don't know if any of you made it to July 3rd, but wow, amazing turnout for that, tons of people, great event, and a good chance to share information about the bonds. And then, of course, continuing to do media outreach as we go to try to educate as many people as we can. We're also doing that through our digital presence and through mailers, and then we've also got some marketing materials, a couple of those items I've shared with you as the meeting got started tonight. So when we talk about our advocacy partners, again, we are looking to folks such as yourselves, our committee members that are informed about the work of the town, particularly residents. Our council will certainly advocate for folks to get out and vote. We are looking to our HOAs and to them to communicate to their membership, and then, of course, working with the Chamber of Commerce and the different businesses in the Morrisville community to share the word about the bonds. So how can you individually get involved? If you've not already, you will be receiving a letter of interest from us at the town as to whether or not you might be willing to be engaged in some of our advocacy efforts. And you can attend another future session, just like those of you tonight that are in person or hearing. You can encourage others to attend other sessions. We'll be at each of our advisory committees over the next month or two, and I anticipate holding additional public educational sessions, sessions, excuse me. We are looking to engage civic organizations, and quite interestingly, we are a community that does not have a lot of civic organizations. So on the highest level, you could help us start civic organizations in the community. Pushing out information about the bond might be a way to bring people together and start some of that civic organization. So if you'd like to know more about that, we'd be happy to talk to you about that. We can also provide you materials for such a meeting. Again, if you are aware of other groups that we might be able to speak to, please feel free to share that information either with me tonight, or with our staff at any time, or with Jeanie Hooks, our Director of Management Services, who's really spearheading our bond effort. We'd be happy to come to any HOA meetings, church meetings, other groups that might be in the community to share this information. And then again, if you're aware of events going on in the community, let us know, we'd be happy to come by and pop a tent up and have our staff there to share information there as well. And then in the presentation, you've got Jeanie's email if you have any questions and you'd like to follow up with her. So the bond referendum. The bond referendum, the last one that we did in Morrisville was in 2012, so it's been a little while, and a lot of that went ultimately towards the renovation at MAFC. So as far as what we've done with those public dollars in the past, MAFC is the most recent example of some of the good work that's been done by bond dollars. We've also done other parks projects and transportation projects in the past. So what we'll do this November is we will ask all of our voters to go out and to vote to either approve or to not approve the bond referendum. We'll talk more in a minute about the three items that will be on that referendum, and that vote is a vote to authorize the town to make use of general obligation bonds. So there's amounts associated with each of these bond questions, and a yes vote in a majority on any of those would authorize the town to then sell those general obligation bonds in order to use the revenue to fund projects. The reason that we would like to do this is that this is the cheapest way for us to finance these large projects that otherwise might honestly not get done. And what you'll see as we talk through this is we're going to do 37, well, we're going to ask for permission, I should say, to do $37 million worth of bond work. And if you look at this year's budget that was adopted in June for fiscal year 2022, the budget for the entire town excluding stormwater is $41.5 million. So we're going to spend in almost an entire year's budget on projects through doing these bonds. So we would not otherwise be able to do many of these bonds. So we also want to use these bonds to construct tangible, desired community improvements. So you'll hear a little bit more as we go through this, that we have reached out to the community to ask, what do you think we need to do? And we try to continue to do that in a variety of ways, and we've seen some of this come up in documents such as our Parks and Rec Master Plan, we've seen this in community surveys, we've heard this through committee feedback and others, that you want to see more parks, more open space. We need to improve our transportation system, and of course, we want to have ample fire protection. So in order to best do that, we need to build ultimately two new fire stations. This bond this year will help us with the first of those two fire stations. We specifically format the ballot language that you'll see to be rather generic. So you may look at that and say, well, that doesn't really say much, or it doesn't really speak to what projects you're going to do, and that's intentional, to allow us the flexibility to change on the fly if we have to, and to make sure that what we ask for approval is generic enough that if we find a better or a different project, particularly in terms of transportation or the parks and open space, that we have the flexibility to shift gears and take advantage of opportunities that might come up over the course of the time that we have the authorization to spend these bonds. And again, there is a taxing authority, so when the vote is taken, if the vote approves a bond question, then that gives the town the authority to not only sell those bonds, but to also raise the taxes necessary to pay back those bonds over time, generally over a 20-year term. And in this case, we'll be talking about a three-cent tax increase, and we'll go a little bit more into what that will look like for the average homeowner in Morrisville. So again, we would like to encourage everyone, those of you that are here tonight and those that may be watching this later, to vote on November 2nd for each of the three ballot questions that we're going to discuss tonight. As I mentioned, we got input to help guide where do these three questions come from. We've done that through web portals, we've done that through public hearings, we've done that through meetings. And again, what you see on the screen there is the things that have been talked about. People value public safety in this community, as in many. They want to see more parks and open space, we need sidewalks, we need greenways, and we need to address traffic congestion. So that is what helped us to form the three bond questions that you will ultimately see on the bond referendum on November 2nd. So here's those three questions in a sort of general sense. Again, $37 million. We're going to ask for $8 million to fund the fire station. That includes property acquisition and construction of a three-bay fire station that will be tentatively on Harris Mill Road off of McCrimmon Parkway. So that would give us the ability to more centrally locate a company that's currently in a shared station with Cary out off of Carpenter Firehouse Road. So this would bring that apparatus back into town and would give us a little better distribution and response time to calls for service that would occur in town. Also, looking at streets, sidewalks, and connectivity, that would be $11.7 million. We'll talk about some of those projects as we go through, and then $17.3 million for parks, recreation, and amenities to go in those parks over time. This is the preview of what the three ballot questions look like. Again, they're officially titled Public Safety Improvements, Parks Recreational and Amenity Improvements, and Streets, Sidewalks, and Connectivity Improvements. I'm not going to read those to you. They're very similar in nature. They, again, give you a sort of general description of what the bond authorizes if approved. And then again, it's as simple as yes or no for each one, and you don't have to vote yes necessarily for all three. You could, you could vote no for all three, you can vote on those as individual questions. Any questions from you up to this point? That's a lot of information to get started with. Okay, I'll keep going. Just some fast facts there. Again, $8 million for Public Safety Improvement Bonds, the Harris Mill Road Fire Station, that would be Fire Station Number Three, so that would bring that ladder truck, again, out from the county into town. And if you can envision sort of on a map, that gives us a little bit of sort of northwest coverage in the town. And then we have Station One just behind us here, which is sort of to the more south and central in town. And then we ultimately will be moving, ideally, Station Number Two, which is currently located on Chapel Hill Road, right there at McCrimmon Parkway, out to Paramount Parkway, closer to the Wake Tech RTP campus. We have worked with them to purchase some property to be able to move that station as it ages out, and that will give us three well-spaced-out fire stations that will enhance response time and overall fire safety and fire protection in not only our community, but also in the areas of the county that we provide service to. So again, that's about $8 million. About $2 million of that roughly is for the land acquisition, and $6 million for the actual construction of the fire station on that lot. The second bond is Streets, Sidewalks, and Connectivity Improvement Bonds. We have a couple of potential projects there. One is the Phase One Extension of Airport Boulevard. That would be bringing it from Church Street to across Town Hall Drive to where it currently ends, and make that connection all the way over to Davis Drive. And then at a future time, we would see Phase Two of that, which would take it from Church Street over to Chapel Hill Road and do a flyover there, again, trying to get away from any at-grade crossings for the railroad, so that would come over the top of the railroad and remove any, so there wouldn't be any railroad intersection there. But this funding would support potentially Airport Boulevard Extension Phase One, which is currently in design. That's a partnership between the town and NCDOT to give us another sort of crosstown connector, if you will, to relieve some of that traffic pressure. Also sidewalk and greenway connectivity enhancements. We do have some additional greenways identified in town that would be constructed over time. Some of that will come through development as property owners develop their property, they're obligated to construct a greenway that we have in our comprehensive transportation plan, and then other areas where we may purchase the property to put in segments of the greenway to enhance our overall connectivity in the community. And then other traffic congestion improvements. So you'll see that we've got a lot of different projects going on. The most significant one, of course, is right outside here on Morrisville Carpenter Road. That's a collaborative project with NCDOT that'll be ongoing for about another 13 months or so before we'll see that finish up. There's also plans to widen McCrimmon Parkway in the future, widen additional sections of NC 54. So there's a lot of work to be done. Some will be town projects, some will be shared projects with NCDOT. And then the third bond is Parks Recreation and Amenities Improvements. We have two projects that are currently underway that we anticipate using some of this funding for. The first is Phase Three of Morrisville Community Park, and that'll be adding two, three additional tennis courts and some pickleball courts, and then a small shelter on that side of Morrisville Community Park where you would access it off of Cudrow Lane, and also a walking trail through the wooded area there, and that's sort of the final phase of that park. And then the other that's underway is Crabtree Creek Nature Park over off of Key Bridge Drive off of 54. We have a small, open field that's used right now, but we have a planned project to expand that, to put in some additional amenities and features, including a trail that would go out into the green, into the woods there to give sort of a nature walk, if you would, in that area as well. So those are two of the potential projects, and then we are actually actively looking to purchase additional property and open space, as there's not a lot left, as you, I'm sure know, you hear a lot of that development coming through. So we are actively working to try to identify parcels that might be converted into park space in the future. Any questions about those? Yes, sir?
Is there any consideration for extending Town Hall Drive to Morrisville Parkway?
Town Hall Drive to Morrisville Parkway? So that has been discussed before, prior to my getting here. I know that there has been two sort of very strong opinions about that, one that very strongly favors that in terms of connectivity, and another that does not favor it in terms of going through where there's the greenway and near some other amenities there. So that has been discussed before. It is not currently a planned project.
The reason I asked is the challenges you, you know, you mentioned are similar things that have been talked about for Airport Boulevard Extension One. It's also going to cut a major, you know, most widely-used, you know, greenway, right? And, you know, going through schools. So it's a similar kind of challenges, and I would personally think that if we are talking about really addressing traffic congestion issues, the town will benefit more from extending Town Hall Drive as compared to the Airport Boulevard. Don't get me wrong, I would love to see Airport Boulevard extended, but the Extension One does not give me return on investment unless you connect it all the way to the other side, right?
Correct.
If you are really looking for return of investments, then it would be extending Town Hall Drive, so.
I understand. And again, some of that becomes the factor of our partner with NCDOT and the roadways that they will help us grow and those that they may not help us grow, and ultimately it's also about community support for where we put roadways as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir? Any other questions?
I have one. So there's been this pop-up dog park.
Yes, sir.
So is it, I haven't heard anything about a dog park in any of this. Is that a possible factor? This, I mean, what are, I guess, what are the plans for the next phase of that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I think a pop-up dog park is right to gauge.
Yes, sir. So we are definitely, we have been doing a pop-up dog park. We're doing that one Sunday a month at Morrisville Community Park, and we're doing that on two of the athletic fields there. So we do a small dog and a large dog, and we have sign-up opportunities for that, that's open, I believe, right now for the next opportunity. So trying to use that to gauge some of the interest that there might be before council makes a commitment to a full dog park. The challenge we have right now with a dog park is where to put one. We don't have any doubt that there's interest. Our Parks and Rec Advisory Committee has consistently shared that with us. It scored well in what's called the PIR, which was part of the 2018 Master Plan, and that's the priority investment ranking as far as what the community would like to see. So I do anticipate that council will consider a dog park in the future. The first step in that is identifying an appropriate parcel and then working from there to figure out what sort of amenities to put on it. But yes, this could certainly be for acquisition of property to develop a dog park, and the amenities for a dog park.
Brandon, the three cents per hundred tax increase, does that apply only if all three of these pass? In other words, if only one passes, it's 1% or, you know, 1%?
Correct. The three cents would be to create the income to pay back $37 million. So yes, if they, all three, do not pass, that would be adjusted. They're not quite a penny a piece, you can sort of, you know, see that with the amounts. But yes, the three cent does assume that all three would pass. And again, that's essentially us using the debt capacity that's available to us for the most part, and that was a decision that council made based on talking with our financial consultants with Davenport and looking what our debt capacity is over time. And so, you know, of course, that's dependent on a lot of things. That's dependent on, you know, conservative estimates in terms of tax, property tax and value growth. It's based on expectations of expenditures over time and what we might need to add in the future. It also takes into consideration the debt that we are currently paying off, that will be rolling off of the books and creates new money. And then, you know, we also have one other significant project outside of these three categories, and that's a public works facility replacement that will have a significant price tag that will also go against the town's sort of overall debt capacity over the next few years.
Does Morrisville have a bond rating?
Yes, we are AAA bond rated, so that is absolutely a huge advantage for us. Again, another reason for us to want to do a general obligation bond as opposed to other types of borrowing, borrowing, sorry, is that we will get essentially the best rate that's available to anyone, to any municipality, given our current rating.
And when will the 2012 bond obligation come off the books?
That is a good question. I believe it would likely be 2032. It could be a little later than that, depending on when we actually borrowed it. And I apologize, I don't have that with me, but in that neighborhood. Generally, it's a 20-year payback from when borrowed. So in this case, if these were all approved, our intention is to not borrow $37 million November 3rd, but to phase this in probably over three issuances over potentially the next five years. We have eight years to issue the bonds, but of course, you know, we don't necessarily want to wait that long, but we also want to balance that against workload and staff capacity and other things, so we'll look at that as well.
So expanding on that, so my question is, why wouldn't you put all the bonds out now when interest rates are lower than they're ever going to be? Why would you wait five years and basically, you know, you're throwing money away?
So some of that is our overall debt capacity, that's factored in, that we can afford the $37 million. Part of that is the phasing. So part of that is that we don't necessarily have the capacity to do $37 million, you know, tomorrow or November 3rd, but as some of this other debt rolls off, we do have that capacity. And again, balance that also with honestly staff capacity, depending on what the project is, because all of these have, you know, work that goes with them. Any other questions?
Just a quick follow-up on the fire station piece. The bond amount there, is that primarily focused on repositioning existing facilities or the size and scope of existing facilities to enhance response time? Are we looking at expansion in addition to that?
No, so no expansion. That's an existing company, so it is currently co-located at a Town of Cary Fire Station. So we don't have today three brick-and-mortar fire stations. We have three companies that respond, and again, we use the quint model, which is essentially a ladder truck, a little bit on steroids in terms of the equipment it carries, and the water, and the hose, and other things. But, so we have three quints or ladder trucks at three stations, and then we also run a rescue unit, like a heavy rescue for crashes. So what's out at Cary Station Seven is what we refer to as Ladder 23. So that crew and that piece of equipment, that apparatus, would be brought into a new fire station, but it would not be an expansion in terms of staff.
And staffing facilities, right? So where I'm going with is, I think, is population increases, is what we have now sufficient for the duration of this build, or is it, it should be contemplated to have a?
Now, we do believe it's sufficient, and so as we space these three, because we'll see population growth, but we will not see any significant geographic growth, because of course, we're pretty much bordered. I mean, we have very little ETJ to grow into. As we grow, we're just seeing little parcels here and there, but essentially, the town is the 10 or so square miles that it's going to be. So with geographically placing these three stations the way we are, ultimately, if there was a need, it would be to add equipment and personnel, but we could do it out of the three stations. We shouldn't need to build a fourth station, at least not in the foreseeable future. Okay? So again, there is a nice rendering of what Fire Station Three could look like. Of course, none of that is finalized, but that is working with our design team from ADW Architects and our construction consultant, Edifice. That's actually a design-build project, which is very innovative and creative. Again, street and sidewalk connectivity, there's an example of where that first phase of Airport Boulevard is going to come through and cross Town Hall Drive and go back over to, connect over to ultimately Davis Drive. And then parks and open space, you can see on the left here, this is the rendering of what the MCP, the Morrisville Community Park Phase Three will look like. Again, you've got three tennis courts up there in the top, you've got pickleball courts next to that, and then a small building there with some restrooms, and then you will see that there's going to be a shelter down here adjacent to one of the baseball fields, and then installing this trail into the woods that'll actually potentially have connectors all the way down to two different apartment complexes. And then what you don't see on the map is, if you can follow my arrow there, there's potentially going to be another leg here that'll make this a walking trail or loop, and council has directed us to look at putting that back in. That piece will be a boardwalk, just because of the, not only the terrain, but the flooding and other things in there. It's not practical to try to put in what we would normally put in. So we have also some real limitations in this park with, we can't put any more impervious surface in there. So anything that we need to put, that we put in has to either be pervious or has to be above ground. So we are likely going to put a boardwalk here, and then these other portions will be impervious, but through a transportation sort of exemption to the stormwater requirements. And then over on this side, this is just a rendering of what the new shelter at the Crabtree Creek Nature Park could look like. Again, it's a very early-on design look. And then down below, you'll see a map that if it was enlarged, would show you sort of where our current parks facilities are and where the need might be to try to add those. So the three-cent tax increment, the annual impact of that, this is, again, have to remind you, this is for illustrative purposes. We don't, we can't know this until it's actually done, but if you look at, in Morrisville, a $750,000 value home, they currently would have a $2,700 tax bill. It would add $225 annually, about $1,875 a month to approve all three of these bond questions. The median home, a $350,000 home, you'd look at $100 annually, and if you were to have a modest $250,000 home, you would look at $75 annually. So for an individual tax-paying family, that's what a three-cent tax increase would look like to approve these bonds. That is what I've got for you. Happy to take any other questions you might have about November 2nd.
The note on page 15 that you just told me about, other fees apply annually? What are those? are those?
You could, let me see, other fees apply annually. You could have, if you have stormwater fees, if you're paying an ERU, and some of those other smaller fees, they would be, I would say, largely inconsequential. They're not going to dramatically change that, but some of those other smaller fees, if we ever went to a solid waste fee or something, we don't currently have that. But those kind of other fees that you might see would be what you might consider there.
Anyone else?
I just had a comment. So I was just looking at your ballot preview. It looks very verbose. So you may, I mean, unless legally required to have it that way, you may want to figure out, how can you make it easy for people to read? Because otherwise, people are just going to gloss over and just say yes or no based upon predetermined perceptions.
Yes, sir. It's a good observation. It's a very interesting and challenging process. So we work with a bond council that specifically does bond work, because we have to make sure that it's sort of a legally bonding, excuse me, binding language. But you're exactly right. We need to make it so that folks know what we're talking about. So very much appreciate that. And probably more time has gone into these three questions than you might imagine just to get to this point, but very valid comment. Thank you.
Anything else? I guess that's it. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time and your attention. And again, would ask you to consider if you think these are worthwhile and would do the right thing for our community to potentially make others aware of these opportunities on November 2nd and share with them what the benefits might be for them if they're willing to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, to 4B, Chris Lawson.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, so tonight, again, Chris Lawson, Planning Manager. Tonight, I want to go over two sections of the UDO, which staff has considered possibly making some tweaks to. We've also worked with Town Council at a Town Council Retreat on some of their ideas on these sections. I've also presented to the Parks Rec and Cultural Advisory Committee. And now I am before the Planning and Zoning Board to talk about these items. And then the two sections that we're focusing on are the tree preservation section of the UDO, as well as 5.5, which covers common open space, public recreation area. And we're going to focus on public recreation area, which is associated with residential development. So it's broken, the presentation's broken into two sections. The first one discusses tree preservation. The second one is with the public recreation area. So really, the presentation is structured that I review what the UDO requires, kind of provide some staff's thoughts on the sections, how they're written now, and how they, how they could be tweaked if needed. And then really want to open it up for discussion from the Planning and Zoning Board. So again, as I said, this was presented at Town Council Retreat in February, and we got a lot of good feedback. And I think we're going to try to move forward with some amendments later this year. And this is really the next step in the process for that amendment. And, excuse me, I have a dry cough, so I might drink some water throughout the presentation.
No problem.
All right. So let's start with tree preservation. I'm going to kind of go over how we, how staff reviews plans when we get a development application. So this is by far the biggest part of tree preservation. Basically, this graph here identifies how much tree canopy has to be preserved for a certain type of development. So if we start on the left side, depending on the existing tree canopy on the far left here, so you'll start by identifying how much tree canopy cover exists currently. Then you'll move towards the next two columns, which identify what type of development it is. So most development we get in town is commercial. So that's non-residential and mixed-use development. So if you are building a Starbucks and there is currently 100% tree canopy, the development will have to save 10% of that tree canopy. And there's a note below that discusses what kind of things are exempt, but overall, 10% of the existing trees have to be saved. Now, once you identify the square footage that must be saved, the, they must be saved in a certain priority order. And this is the priority order. So really, it just runs through, it's not as complicated as it seems. Basically, deciduous trees have to be saved first, and especially if they're in groups. Then you get into mixtures of deciduous and evergreen trees. Third is specimen trees, which are your larger, 24 inches or larger trees. And then the last, number four, is just kind of anything scrub leftover, you have to save that. So though, if you have deciduous trees, those have to be saved first. And then if you have additional square footage left over, you can move down to priority order two, three, and then ultimately four. So here are some strengths that I've identified. Basically, it does not allow for clear cutting of the site. Existing trees must be saved and placed in a permanent tree preservation easement. So that's the last part I should have covered. So once the development's finished, a final plat is recorded, which shows any kind of easements, including utilities and egress easements. But it also shows the tree preservation area, and it is platted and recorded at the Register of Deeds. So if somebody comes later on, you know, 20 years down the road, wants to expand the Starbucks, they put an addition on Starbucks, staff can pull up the plan, see, no, those trees were required to be permanently preserved. And there are options for adjusting those around, but basically, the overall idea is that, once you put the trees in a tree preservation area, they will forever be saved as trees and in natural space. So back to my strengths here, so trees are saved. And the third one is, we get fairly detailed tree surveys, which document tree canopy coverage and a few other things. So we have, you know, any site in town that's been developed within the last 10, 15, maybe a little longer years, there is a tree survey, which showed what that site looked like before it was developed. So the next few slides are just an aerial comparison of what the current UDO, how it's written, what kind of trees it saves, what the results are, pretty much. So this one is Myers Point Towns. So this is a townhome development located on Church Street, right across from Downing Glen. You'll see on the right side of your screen, there's the railroad right of way. On the left side, there's Church Street. So this is just an aerial image, pre-development to post-development. As you can see, most, almost all the trees were saved at the rear of the property. And they had to save whatever specific amount, probably 10%, because it's completely covered in trees. This one, to me, makes a little bit of sense, because of the back of the property, it really slopes off, gets low, stays wet most of the time. It kind of made sense to save the trees at the back of the site. This one is Broad Central Side. So this is an apartment complex. This is at the end of Town Hall Drive, where it hits McCrimmon, and his development's between Town Hall Drive and Church Street. You can see, this site, they ultimately saved a large number of trees, but they were pushed to the left side of the site, right along, right along Town Hall, and they were removed along most of McCrimmon and its intersection with Church Street. And I picked this one, because this was one that, as far as staff, we heard some feedback on, you know, one day I drove by and all of a sudden, the whole field was cleared of trees. But did want to point out, the current UDO did require a lot of trees to be saved, but they were probably not in the most visible locations. Let's move on to another one. This is, this development's called Resort Lifestyles. It's actually at the end of Town Hall Drive, Catty Corner to Broad Central Side. This one is currently still being built, so this is the latest aerial I have on the right. The reason I wanted to pick this one was, if you notice, they were able, they were able to save trees right at the corner, or the intersection of McCrimmon and Town Hall. And during council's retreat, I pointed this one out. This seemed to have more favorable feedback, rather than the Broad Central Side across the street. The last of the four is the Thornberry subdivision, which is directly behind you, across Town Hall Drive, across the Town Center Stormwater Pond. And this is, this was a mixture of single-family homes and townhomes. Probably should have started earlier, but single-family homes, just normal detached single-family homes, we cannot require tree preservation for. We can for townhomes, multifamily, and then commercial. So this development's a mixture of the two, and did have some tree preservation. Okay. So now that we've seen a few examples, let's move on to some considerations. So the first one is a manicured versus a natural look. So if you have brand-new plantings that are all planted at a standard, standard distance requirement and standard size, they all, the same tree looks the same, and it's going to grow basically the same. So you're going to have just one tree, next 10 foot, another tree, the same size. Consider that versus natural growth, which you have plants of different sizes, both in caliber, height, variety. So it's one of the considerations. So the location of tree preservation on sites. So again, we've got a lot of developments that have saved a lot of trees, but they might not be in the most visible locations. So do, you know, would the Planning and Zoning Board like them to be along the road? Let them remain to be in a site, in an area on the site that is more convenient to develop? Are there other things, such as, you know, trees next to waterways, or maybe environmentally more sensitive areas, you know, whatever, whatever that would mean? So really, those first two are just kind of really your values. What do you prefer for tree preservation? The third bullet point is adjusting that table that I went through at the very beginning. So should the town require more or less trees to be saved? Should that table be adjusted, basically? Should more or less overall existing tree canopy be saved? The fourth one is common open space versus tree preservation requirements. So any commercial site has to preserve common open space and tree preservation. Does the, is the board find that, you know, maybe we want less common open space requirements, but increase that tree preservation requirement? So there's a trade-off. So a developer still has to dedicate an overall percentage, but we can adjust within that percentage. So let's say, common open space is 5%, tree preservation's 5%. So you have 10% to work from. Do we want to adjust, adjust one to be lower, one to be higher? The second to bottom is closing loopholes or other allowable reductions. So currently, developers can reduce the amount of tree save required if they replace them elsewhere, if they replace the trees elsewhere. A lot of times what happens is they'll reduce the tree preservation and use those, take the, take the replacement trees and plant them in their already required landscape buffer. I would advocate that we make the code clear, that it does, you cannot reduce the amount of preserved trees and then just put them in your landscape buffer where you're already going to have to have trees. And then other. Other would be, you know, any ideas the board has. So I got, let's see, I got a few more slides. So I'll probably come back to the slide, but here are the key questions for the board tonight. You know, do you want to change the prioritization, do you want to change the priority order of trees that are required to be saved? Do you have a specific idea on how much? If we were to amend the table that requires how much has to be saved, what does that look like? Does the size of parcel matter? Currently, with our landscaping and our tree preservation, you can have a parcel, you know, the size of the podium area, and you still have to, you still have to preserve all, the same amount of trees as you would if you had a 10-acre tract. If I were going to propose language, I would have a certain cutoff for, if you have so small of a parcel, you don't have to meet those requirements. Trade-offs in lieu of other requirements. Again, does the board prefer more trees over common open space? Does the board prefer, we reduce the maximum or minimum, minimum parking, or number of parking space requirements, and we incentivize more trees or require more trees? Just any ideas on that would be helpful for crafting amendments or, you know, moving forward as we talk more about this in the future. And then the very end, any other ideas for trees and tree preservation you might have? So really, what I mean by this is, if you have an idea of your own you want to bring up, if you drive around town and you thought, I've always thought this one thing, and I think it would make sense about trees, now is the time, I'd love to hear about it. So here's what I heard from Town Council back in February at their retreat. They prefer a greater percentage of trees, existing tree canopy saved. And there's several options for this. There was no really consensus on what, you know, what they want to go for on that. And they want to prioritize trees and environmentally sensitive areas first. And then second, prioritize trees and locations that are visible from nearby streets. And again, that last, the last bullet point on here is something that I've heard as a staff member for three years, is, I drove by a site and all of a sudden, there's no trees. And I, you know, I think if developers would have saved more trees closer to the, closer to the road, closer to major intersections, some of the feedback we've gotten as planning staff probably, might not have happened. Because again, some of these, some of these development sites save a lot of trees, they're just at the rear of the site where no one knows they're there. So council was pretty clear, I think, on these three things. But again, lots of flexibility in, you know, how we would accomplish this. So I've got a second half of presentation, that'll deal with Parkland. But for now, let me come back to this slide, and if it's okay, I just would like to hear any feedback you have at this time, or questions on how the UDO is regulated, how it reads, questions about any of that.
Just in general, have you run any scenarios on, so that, I really liked the examples that you showed around, you know, what happened, what it looked like before, what it looked like now. Have you looked at any scenarios, if you changed the rules, what these properties would have looked like post that?
I have not done that. And I've thought about it, but there's, there's a lot of different options that we could, we could go through. So a specific idea I've had is, if we are, as a town, going to increase the amount of tree canopy that's saved, can we require it to be where a landscape buffer would be planted? So a lot of times we get is, a developer will come in, clear off a site, and then they'll have to replant a buffer in the site they just cleared. Is there a way we can say, yes, you know, the town is going to require more tree save, but we actually want you to plant it in an area where you're going to have to plant trees anyway? So there's a lot of flexibility on, you know, where that, if the numbers need to be raised, where that ends up. And it comes back to that, that priority order. So the first table I showed, which discuss, shows how much actually has to be saved, clearly probably the most important part of the whole ordinance. But to me, the priority order is the key. It is, okay, you're going to have to save trees. Where are you going to save them? And that, this could range from anywhere. We get rid of the priority order, and we say, you're a developer, you're designing the site, you know a lot about the site, just save that 10%. Or we could get more specific than it is now and say, council identified wetlands, floodplain as the top area. If you have that on site, that has to be saved. Council then identified major street intersections, that's the next area has to be saved, trees have to be saved near. So no, I, I guess a long answer, but no, I have not run, I've not run scenarios.
Chris? Are we making an assumption that these trees are maintained and the cost of the maintenance is done by a developer or by the city?
So they would be by the developer?
The developer.
Yeah.
I can say, I prefer a manicured look, if that makes a difference. And then for location, over dog parks, I worked with, one of the places I lived for a sound buffer, we had a company come in and designed the tree canopy because of the size of the buildings and the height. In particular, you have a slide coming up that shows buildings face around the center courtyard. Trees work really well, the right types of trees put into those areas. So I think there's some opportunities that, as you start to, collective areas, and that might be helpful as well. And then for sidewalks, that looks nice, and if the developer's taking care of it, I mean, ultimately, that rolls into costs somewhere, but as you start to decorate, eventually those costs will hit somewhere. But it does look nice on the sidewalks.
It does.
I had a, maybe a contrary comment to what Chris had here. When you talk about manicured look, you're really talking about clearing the land and then planting new ones and then, you know, rearranging some of that, right? Is that? Is that what you are talking about?
Yeah, so what I was getting at, at there is really, like I just said, sometimes we get developers that come in, they clear the land to, to develop the site and then they have to replant trees in a buffer that already had trees on them in that area.
Yeah, so I would definitely want developers to avoid that. You don't want to take out mature trees and then plant it with, you know, trees that take another 20 years to grow, right? So we certainly, I mean, that would be my preference that we don't do that. Now, can we, can we ask them to add more trees to that? You know, if that area does not have trees in there, sure, you could do that. But we certainly, you know, one of the things people love, loved about Morrisville and now complain about it is the amount of tree cover it had, right? And, and, you know, as the council pointed out around the streets, this is where the UDO conflicts as well, right? We require them to have closure towards the street presence as compared, as opposed to, you know, behind, set, you know, having such the buildings further out. So we need to balance those two things, right? The other comment you had around open space. I do understand people want parks, people want open spaces, but that also means you are going to cut down trees and, you know, landscape it with grass. Now those two things, you can't have both ways. I, I would prefer creating space underneath the tree canopy if you, if you can, right? Keeping the large trees around and creating open space around it. Those would be my preferred options. And, and even when you are talking about a new building, I would, I wonder where, how those open spaces are generally used in these spaces, right? If you take a, the, the, you know, if you take any of these big properties, the open spaces, I don't know how many people within that community or within that commercial area use those open spaces. Maybe we need to think about, do we really need that open space if that usage is not as much? Keep the tree canopy around that.
And I'll, I'll be, let me clarify, clarify common open space requirement. This is for every commercial site in the town is required to have common open space. And what that means is it ranges from walking paths to a bench to gazebos to all kinds of things like that. And it's, it's required for, for commercial spaces only. So residential has its own unique set of things.
All I'm trying to say is that you can still achieve an open space without cutting the entire tree. You can cut the branches and create an open space underneath the tree, right? So that, that's would be a preferred option as opposed to taking the trees down. I mean, those are the two things that come straight to my mind. In, in terms of habitat protection, environmental features, I don't know whether we need to explicitly call that out because I would think as a, as somebody who's developing a property, there are already environmental regulations that they have to comply by. And I would think those environmental regulations prohibit them from cutting trees in those spaces. So do we really want to call that out? Maybe, maybe not, I don't know, right? I'm, I'm just saying that if it is already covered under the environmental, you know, compliance needs, we don't have to call them out and give them that as an option. Those are by default required. So you address the areas where they would have kind of substituted and found that loophole of saying, okay, this area is going to be meeting the needs.
Yeah, I, I like your thoughts on common open space and just replacing it with tree preservation personally. As far as the, if, say, say a buffer is, is preserved trees instead of being torn out and replaced with manicured trees. Another thought I've been thinking of as I've been pondering all these things are, okay, so a buffer is 30, is required to be 30 feet wide. Someone only has 22 feet width of a tree. You know, existing trees only 22 feet wide. These are other things I've thought about as far as how do we capture that? Do we just say you're, you're close and that counts or, or what? So.
To me, the answer is very simple, right? If they are 20 feet out and the requirement is 10 feet, they plant, you know, more trees to cover that 10 feet. Right? If you, if you go down giving exceptions, you know, making exceptions to those requirements, then you are on a slippery slope.
So I mean, I, I can see, well, so there's a couple of things. It's sort of a counter, counterpoint. A lot of this, if you're talking about a commercial property, it may not be possible to keep the same grade that you already had. You're, you're altering the topography. So if you do that to build a project, then you've got to cut the trees down. So there's going to be certain projects that are going to have by necessity, need to remove trees and then put things back. Now, there may be other projects in which, and maybe kind of what you were saying. Maybe if you've got that 25-foot or 22-foot and you agree to save that in its current state without changing that topography, maybe that would be a place where you could say, okay, instead of the 30, you're going to save 22 of the original area. So maybe that's a trade-off. I, I don't know if that's something you can reasonably do without, like you said, going down too much of a slope. And then the other thing is, like I've noticed in my neighborhood Savannah, we have a whole lot of 60, 70-foot tall pine trees that have been saved in between houses. And that doesn't do anything for anyone. You save trees just to say that you did. And it doesn't help, it doesn't really give much shade. They just basically fall down and crush stuff. You know, one of them smashed a pool fence and damaged some things one time, you know, and they're a vista house. So like, I'm definitely not a huge fan of worrying too much about saving, at least the tall, you know, the, what we typically see for pine trees that are mature trees. You know, a lot of these areas were like at one point like tree farms and whatever, that cycle's been changed. So I mean, I, saving something like that just to do it, I would, I would prefer, prefer more weight given to like the deciduous trees, more understory vegetation, things that are lower that actually might buffer things. Whereas if you have a pine tree, that, yes, it's a great big pine tree. It's 32-foot, 32-inch caliper on the trunk, but that's all you got. You don't have any greenery, you know, down at that level. And so like, that's, that's why, like, I like that having down low on the thing. I would move it down even lower for a pine tree, my personal opinion. Just because I don't think that people perceive that as a very, like, you're going to see right through that and you're not going to say, oh yeah, you saved a lot of trees and it was great.
All right, right, and the pine trees especially when they start bending when they get very tall, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and then the neighborhood I lived in before in Breckenridge, we had a, a ton of these little pine trees behind the house. We had a big ice storm one year. And until we moved out like six years later, half the trees were all bent over. Like they had been permanently bent and it just looked terrible. It was just, you know, again, not a, those are just not trees that I, I would, I think you, if you did a thoughtful rework of that and like I say, including understory as well as taller trees, you know, you would have a better end product, I think, than just saving those trees. How you would put that in any kind of regulatory regime to capture it, I don't know. You know?
All right, and that, and then at the day, that is something I think a staff would want is to be very, we want regulations that are very clear, so anybody that reads them can say yes or no. And that is, that is a lot of times where we get into struggles of what, what do the words actually say? And what do they mean? But you did hit on something that, I, I've talked to a few people, developers at least, about this and the grading of the site. And we have to actually build stuff here. If we, you know, sometimes we save trees and it's still hard to get it around and build. That's other things I'm considering. And as far as incentivizing those environmental features that they already maybe not can't build on better, that was in my mind almost going to be a trade-off of saying, we are going to increase at some level, but we're going to give you, we're going to give you one as far as on a, on a floodplain. Does that make sense as far as we're overall going to increase it? But we'll, we'll give a little bit right here on a flood. So that's just some of the thinking I've been thinking about and, and I think your comments are very helpful.
And I meant to ask, what, what were the numbers based on in that table before? Just sort of put the finger to the wind and made something up? Or was there some sort of, you know?
As far as, as far as this table right here?
Yeah.
So this has been the tree preservation requirements since at least 2013. Are you aware of any earlier? I don't remember, I don't know the exact year it started.
Yeah, I don't think neither planning manager or law firm I have a deep understanding of where the numbers came from. I do know that the chart came in with the UDO update and it sounds like there was a considerable amount of discussion about tree preservation and tree conservation requirements at that time. But we don't have the detailed history.
I mean, increasingly it wouldn't like violate some, you know, it wouldn't be like, oh my gosh, you're doing something totally different than anyone else necessarily. It's not like this has been sort of decided on the normal amount of trees or, you know?
Well, so our, I, I've, I've been researching this among the other various Western Wake County municipalities. Everyone seems to do it a little differently and ours is not. The way Morrisville set it up is not like any other towns that I've come across. I will say Morrisville and Cary received local legislation back in 1999 authorizing this. Not every town has authorization. And it's been a very contentious issue, you know, as, as clearly if you come to build a piece of property, 10% of your land is already stuck with tree preservation, that, that takes away some of it. So it's been very contentious. But most towns across the state, if they have to regulate trees, they just rely on the general police powers given to them through subdivision and zoning regulations. The town has a specific local authorization. It is both clear and very vague. It does not mention any of this stuff on the screen right now. It mentions overall that we have the authority to do, do so. So, you know, talking with developers who have worked here for, for a number of years, longer than I've been here, there was a lot of thought that went into this. And as I played around with the numbers, at first I was like, we have way too many brackets. Let's reduce that. And what ended up happening was the math worked out so that the brackets were like dramat, dramatically off. So you went up one bracket and you had to save way more trees or less trees. So I, I would, the research I've done, I would want to keep this general kind of, kind of bracket breakdown in columns and rows, but maybe adjust it in, in, there's a lot of ways to adjust it, but I, I don't, I don't know that answer right now.
So in these trees, when we talk, when we talk about trees, it seems like to me at least that we, the, the builders kind of take into account the shrubs, the count shrubs as well as trees too, right? We, we perhaps need to kind of define what does a tree mean, right? And, and what does it constitute?
Yes, that's actually, was that not on my questions here? I don't think it was on my questions, but that's a very good point and something I wanted to talk about. The, the, something I found in that research with Cary Apex, at least Cary and Apex, is the town of Morrisville does not have a minimum tree size. So it leads to that kind of vague awkward situation where a developer's saying, all right, well, we've got a few trees, but those, clearly you don't count those, do you? Well, our UDO would count that as a tree. So I, I would like to move towards having some minimum cutoff as far as what is a tree. Mostly just so planning director and I can say, it's very clear right here, this is a tree or not a tree.
And just to, to be clear, the preservation table is preservation of existing tree. There's no, because when you look down in the presentation, we're talking about replacement of trees. So you can't, they're not interchangeable, right? You can't swap that out and have that count?
So the, the UDO currently allows a development to identify a site and reduce the tree canopy by 49% without any action. Past that, it has to go to town council. So they can, they can reduce it by that amount. They have to replace those trees elsewhere. And there's a specific formula for how they have to replace, basically have to document every single tree they remove and replace caliper inch per caliper inch. And the, the number of trees has to be at least equal to or greater than, than what was removed. That is another, on, on one of my slides, I mentioned loopholes. I don't know if that's necessarily a loophole, but that's one of the things I, I would, if, if I brought specific text amendments to you tonight, I would advocate raising that number to allow for some flexibility, but not, not allowing, you know, 49% of the required save. Maybe, maybe reducing it to 20 or 15, maybe less. And that's not a heavily utilized option, but it has been used at least twice in my three years here that I can think of. Back to my key questions. Anyone else? John?
This might be more appropriate for the bond referendum section, but it seems to me ties in very well with tree preservation. And I know it was already voted down by the Parks and Rec Committee, but a disc golf course kind of hits all the spots. I know it doesn't have much to do with UDO compliance, but is that something that, and then I see the third section where you want over public recreation, so it's kind of a trifecta.
Yeah, I, I think they could all three work together somehow. There are disc golf courses I played on in Raleigh that are heavily wooded. I'm not sure, standing here tonight, I'm not sure how we, we mix the three together, but I think there's some, some room for that, certainly, yeah.
Some developer to do it for you one time.
Yeah, yeah.
Along the same lines, right? I'm just brainstorming, so please, let's cut down this discussion at some point. But as, as you are developing green, you know, greenways, what I've seen is, you know, that entire section is cut down. Again, I don't see why that entire section needs to be cut down. You have got trees on both sides, but as you are walking, there is no canopy on top of you, right? Is that something that we could avoid as we build greenways, right? Can you have, you know, walkways underneath the trees, right? Without cutting the trees that go through them?
So we'll go back to, I, I think I understood your question. If we go back to my aerial of Broadstone Trailside Apartments, and these, again, this is Alama Crimmin. If you'll follow my mouse, this is a greenway path, which pre-existed this development. In that priority order that I would, that I would, if I could just do it right now, I would design, I would say, tree preservation around existing or planned greenways should be either required or encouraged as one of the top orders. Because there, there are other greenways around town which are still under development or are been developed but don't have a, or the greenway's been built, but there's not developed around it. And I, I agree with you. I think that having that existing tree canopy that surrounds the greenway is really beneficial to it. And I, I think there is a way we could regulate that.
Chris?
Just, just, just to clarify, from a developer standpoint around the housing units or whether it's commercial property, I'm thinking that's the manicured area. I wasn't thinking along the green space because it makes it very difficult to build. And then we're looking at modern buildings. We're trying to appeal to a certain type of people coming into the area. So we're talking about woods and trees and I want to have birds and animals. At the same time, that's not what we're building. So I think the greenways are very different than the areas that are actually being developed, which logistically you have to have people come in quickly. They pull it in these vans, they cut the trees, they spray the trees, the bugs, everything's taken care of. They're not going to design around a bunch of old trees. So, you know, we, we need to keep those separate. And I don't want to see the old trees in those areas, so.
Right, right. Yeah, and, and it's a very good point. And I, I think my, my use of the word manicured, it refers to more just the, the placement of trees every certain feet, less than the long-term maintenance. But the long-term maintenance is certainly something to consider. So I guess if, if I were to describe it again, it would be if, right behind you is this town center Stormwater Pond, along Town Hall, Town Hall, Long Town Hall Drive, the town planted a certain tree every foot, every so foot, every so often. And if you go behind the pond, there is that natural woods there that really has that diverse mix of, of growth. And that's, that's kind of what I mean by, by that.
Yeah, and I think that, that makes sense. But I like to see the trees along the sidewalk and I like that spacing. I like that it's trimmed, people that walk, that, you know, it's orderly.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Sorry, Tim.
Anyone else? Move on to the.
Move on to the next, next one? Okay, and so I'm struggling up here, so forgive me. All right, so the next section is 5.5.2, this is public recreation area. As I said earlier, every development in town has to dedicate either common open space or public recreation area. Non-residential is common open space. So we'll, we'll leave that one for now. But, but right now, we're going to talk about public recreation area, which is for residential developments. So if we, if we think in theory, the single-family residential subdivisions were the first group of subdivision, of, of development that was allowed to, the town was allowed to require the dedication of public recreation space. And this is, comes in two forms. Either a fee simple transaction that the town actually owns the land or a payment alue of, of the actual land dedication or a combination of the two. The town also has local legislation to require multifamily developments, so generally apartments, to dedicate, to give us a payment alue or a partial payment alue and led land dedication. For any residential development, the town almost always receives a payment alue instead of having land actually dedicated to the town. There's a few reasons for this, but I, I'll kind of get into them later. And really, if you think about public recreation area, it's, it's, you know, it comes out of, say you've got a city being developed, you don't want the entire city to be developed and have no public park space left. So that's where the theory came from with this, with this authority that we have as far as zoning and subdivision regulation. So this is the specific local bill that, that Morrisville received that allows multifamily to, to get a payment alue. to get a payment alue for park space from multifamily developments. So not every town, um, across the state has this. All right. So how do we determine how much land conveyance is required? It's a fairly simple formula. And you just kind of run the numbers. And again, so for a regular subdivision, it's one thirty-fifth of an acre, which is a pretty standard number. I don't know exactly where that number comes from. I can't remember. I did the research back in February and now I don't remember. That's a standard number across the state. But you divide one thirty-fifth an acre by the number of dwelling units. The P I L formula, which we usually get, is based on the value of the land. And that's the tax value, not a private assessor, the market value, the value that the developer bought the land for. That is from the tax value. So we get, um, with any developments, we get the Wake County I M A P's tax form that comes in to, to prove the value. And that's how we run the, the formula. Multifamily is a little simpler, um, as far as the P I L. It is just a straight number that is set in the budget. This year it is two thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars. So every dwelling unit that is in an apartment complex, the developer will pay us, the town, two thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars. So some of these numbers get, get very high. The Ulta Morrisville Development, which is on Morrisville Carpenter across from the Taco Bell, they paid the town around five hundred and ninety thousand dollars before they were issued certificate of occupancies. To my knowledge, I'm not aware that the town's ever received land dedication from multifamily development. But possibly in the future. So again, I've got some examples here. So it's, several examples are the same as the tree. So this is the Myers Point Town Homes, again on Church Street, right across the street from Downing Glen, between Church Street and the road right away. They did not dedicate, uh, parkland to the town. They did do a payment alue. The total payment alue was three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And that, that comes straight to the town, um, in, in one large payment. So if they would have had to require, if they would have dedicated parkland instead, they would have dedicated about two, two point eight acres. And that's roughly the size of that green square I, I drew on this. Doesn't mean it would be in that area necessarily, but that's to give you an idea of how much land it would be, would be. Second example is multifamily. Again, this is Broadstone Trailside in the Town Hall Drive along McCrimmon. They paid the town five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, uh, as parkland payment alue. Now, I, I kind of skipped over this earlier, but with multifamily, the local legislation does not allow the town to require complete land dedication. They have, we'd have to do either a payment alue or a split of land dedication and payment alue. Partially that reason is if you see this green blob again, this is half of what, what the land dedication will be required. So it's already pretty large on the site. But say if the town did require half land dedication and half P I L, this development would have had to dedicate a size, um, park space of this size, as well as still pay the town two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for our, our, for the parkland. Okay. So there are design standards for public recreation area. So if you come in, you build in the town of Morrisville and you want to dedicate actually park, actual parkland, you can't just give up the land in the back that stays wet all year and won't really be used for anything. You have to follow these design standards. Now, um, when I did research across the state, just asking, you know, how do other towns do this? What kind of land do you get? Most, most other towns across the state and as well as our Western Wake County neighbors here, just take the parkland payment alue because, um, my own theory is that they're a little different than Morrisville. They're still expanding. They still have large room to buy parks and they want to pool that money so they can build a, build a larger park. Some other towns said, here's our standards and they didn't have nearly the standards that we have here. And I, I asked the question, like number six here is no more twenty-five percent of land can be within a floodplain. I would ask, how do you prevent from getting land dedicated that's in a floodplain? And I was surprised. Some of the answers were, our, our town thinks that's valuable land. We want to preserve that and we want to control it. So I think there's, there's not a right decision. It's all, um, it's just, it's different things. So a few of them though are valuable. So the parkland we get would have to have, um, street furniture on a public street. So it couldn't be the back of a property that we didn't have public right-of-way access to as far as the town. But, but see, these are some of the design standards that are, you know, open for change. And really, what I would suggest is that you think about what do you want the parkland or park space to look like? And then we build some design standards off of that. Or if you think it's, these are fine, they, they can stay or if one needs tweaked. Now you'll see on the screen, there is a number eight that is red. That is because, um, you previously recommended approval of this language. It's currently before town council, um, possibly for adoption Tuesday night, possibly, probably for adoption later in July. And this basically says that if there's an area identified in the comp plan, specifically a sub-area plan, so along McCrimmon and the town center or in the T O D, and it's identified as preferable to have for open space or public recreation space, town staff can look at the plan, compare it against the development plan and say, okay, you already have to dedicate common open space or public recreation area. It needs to be in this specific area. And so the hopes for that, let's say at least in the, in the transit oriented district, uh, along Watkins Road, is that there could be some kind of central park space. The town center plan also calls for a central, a central park space. So that, that is our initial forte into, uh, redesigning these standards. Oh, and I have a slide here. So, um, this is the town center sub-area plan from the land use plan that was adopted in February. Number eleven here identifies this is a central park area. So let's say a private developer came in and wanted to build, you know, half the space out. We can say, look, you have to dedicate this percentage already. Here's what the, here's where the, the plan calls for it to be built. And so again, that's, that's up for adoption, um, probably in July twenty-seventh. So. All right. So our current public recreation area like policies, so the strengths. We almost always get, as far as the town, gets payment alues instead of actual land dedication. So that allows the town to gather those funds and just hold on to them and, and buy more of a central recreation area or invest in a central recreation area. It allows the town to ultimately decide which properties, uh, it wants to buy. And, um, instead of letting developers, in, instead of us crafting, you know, really objective standards and letting the developer kind of pick and choose which land fits in that and, and that they would dedicate. So, so here's some key questions, um, again, just like the trees. So should land education be required or should it be a combination of payment alue and land dedication? Would you view parkland dedication for single-family developments and multifamily developments differently? Are there preferred locations within town that land should be dedicated with a development? Say along the new McCrimmon extension. That's just an idea. Do you, would you prefer a different design standard for public recreation area? And again, think about the uses of the land as well as the size of developments. And really, the, the second to last bullet point here is I think the, the, if, if the town were to change the current policies, this is the, the ultimate question is, do you prefer individual parks closer to developments, which are smaller? Or do you prefer the town continue creating more centrally developed, located parks that can be acquired via payment alues or other, other funding sources? And, uh, multiple developments can use that park. And again, just other, any, any, any other ideas possible? So earlier I said I, I had taken this to council's retreat in February. I also presented to the Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Advisory Committee. When I presented on the trees, there was a pretty, pretty strong consensus on what the vision was for this. It was, the, the opinions were all over the place, ranging from very firm on keeping the current policies to I, I just don't know. And I'll, I'll say from a staff perspective, we, the town do not have land dedication. We usually just get the payment alue. So I never have, I've never had to actually think about it when reviewing a plan. So the, the, the ideas, the opinions, the thoughts were all over the place on this. So really we're looking for, you know, any kind of ideas you think would work. And I think from a staff perspective, um, something we've already worked into the language, like I said earlier, the design standards, number eight that was in red, is this bottom bullet point. Provide options for staff to make a determination. Now again, that, it needs to be as, uh, as objective as possible as far as black and white, yes, no. It, it can't be, um, you bring in a development and the planning director gets to decide by the way the wind blows that day, if she wants this land or that land or not. So it has to be very, very clear what is required or not required. I think from a staff perspective, what we were looking at is the, the transit oriented development district and the McCrimmon area. And we think that with that last, again, letting, um, letting staff say, if it's shown in a plan as being common open space or parkland, that's the land the town really values and wants. But again, there's, there's all kinds of options up in the air, but that, that's currently the direction we're heading. I have anything else? I have no other slides. So just please provide feedback at this time.
Just a couple of quick questions. I understand the mechanics. So on the, on the payment in lieu, you, you mentioned that you're, you would do that on, on tax assessed value, not market value. When you go to buy land, your market value, right? So how, how has that worked out in the past? And do you see an issue now with the, with the available land up for grabs, if you will, that that's going to be tighter in the future?
Yeah, very, very good question. And actually that's been asked, um, every presentation I've had. So the, the general statutes specifically say is we have to base it off tax assessed value. We, we cannot, um, base it off market value. And what I have noticed is the tax value is very different in, in a lot of cases than the actual sale value of the land. Clearly, you know, more, we have, the town has expanded our boundaries as far as our planning jurisdiction as far as it's going to go. I, I can't speculate on the land value and, and all that, but I would assume it's going to go up as more land is developed and there's less available land. A lot of what we're seeing as far as staff outside the McCrimmon area, there are these smaller parcels that have the environmental features that make it more difficult to build on already. But that's, that's mostly what is left around town besides the McCrimmon extension area.
So in the, in the presentation, you have the strengths of the public recreation areas, um, slide. In your view, what's the opposite of that? What's the, what's the negative of going with that?
What's the negative of our current policies?
Yeah. What would you, you know, what would you change? There's clear, clear strengths to being able to,
Well.
But as we just discussed, what, what's the reverse of that?
Yeah. And thank, thanks for asking that. So I moved to Morrisville, I moved to an apartment complex that I could have walked to a park, but it was a long walk along a fairly major highway. So I think the value of having central parks is there's big areas, but in a lot of times folks have to drive to get to those areas or take some kind of transportation. The, so it's good and bad. It, if you, if you don't mind having smaller areas, whether they are programmed or not, whether they are just open fields for people to sit on and use. I think there's a lot of strength in terms of getting parks near development, being able to walk to them. But then if that's all the town had ever done, we would not have, um, Morrisville Community Park. So it, it's, it's a lot of trade-offs as far as size, location, ease of access.
So it's nobody's asking questions. As somebody who grew up in India where, you know, population is high and, and whatnot, I totally agree with what you just said. And, and with Morrisville's challenge about traffic, people do hesitate to take their kids to parks. I mean, they do want to go, but then they are also stuck in, in traffic. So I would prefer land closure towards properties where the, the, you know, kids can just walk around or go and do play around with the people in the community. So to me, whether it is single-family, multifamily, uh, or for that matter, any other property, if we are going to dedicate some open space for, uh, you know, the, the people living in that community to gather together, uh, we should, we should look for those opportunities. Where should those be? Definitely not along the, uh, you know, thoroughfares. So, uh, you know, some of the pictures where you showed them around there, but preferably towards the, you know, away from the thoroughfares so that, you know, you don't run into accidents or things of that nature, right? From a safety point of view. So that would be an ideal situation, right?
Yeah. And I think, uh, one of my slides got lost between February and now, but there was another slide I had which said key considerations. And a lot of what that slide focused on was kind of what I just talked about. The McCrimmon extension area is really the last area of town where we're going to be able to get, those larger residential developments. And, um, with the airport overlay, with, with the zoning where, where the council is considering now, it would be just a, a few more multifamily developments. And past that, there is not really that area of town where you're going to have those almost six hundred thousand dollar payments directly to the town for parks and, and things like that.
I mean, that, that's another reason, right? We don't have enough land to go and buy. So even if you get P I, you know, the, the money, it's probably going to go to, you know, maintenance of current properties. I don't know whether you can build a big park anywhere in Morrisville that I know of. Maybe if you want to build, uh, near the Holly, you know, where Peter used to, lives or used to live.
Polly, Polly Creek?
That, that area again is not up for grabs to build any park. So where are you going to build a park? Just taking money doesn't really help if you can't leverage it. Right? Plus you can't, as, as Tim just pointed out, if the land cost is more and your, your P I Ls are not going to be enough to go against that, why bother? You know, might as well develop these small parking, uh, open spaces closer towards the community and people leverage them.
Josh?
On a couple of slides, you had the areas partitioned off. I guess they were hypothetical areas if they had done a public recreation area. I, I wanted to ask a question about how the developer actually works with the town to decide on those areas. I know you have the guidelines and these are just, um, hypothetical sequestered areas. But you, you said you've never done, the town's never done this before. So I know you can't give a direct example, but, but can you speak to what that would entail? And because I, I guess my, uh, what I'm curious is maybe the developers are often choosing payment in lieu because they don't want to work with more voices, more hands on deck. Is that some of the consideration that they're?
I, I suspect so, yes. Well, and I suspect they worked the other way around also. You know, fifteen, twenty years ago, when there was tons of land left, it was, well, why do we want this developer just picking leftover land to give to the town? Let's get the money and then we can control the money and decide where to put the parks. And when I've talked to parks planners in other towns, that's the same thought. It's, you know, the town wants to have that ultimate control, um, of where the park space is going to go. And then again, other thought is if, if every single development around town had dedicated parkland, we would have, there'd just be a lot of random spaces that probably wouldn't be programmed. And again, when I've talked to other people, they say, some areas are just wooded areas and that's okay. And other areas we have playgrounds or, um, you know, ball fields or, or anything like that. So, um, any input on, on those factors? So does every piece of property the town get have to be programmed or can it just stay and, and, and be wooded? But I think for the most part, the, the amount of money as far as the check written to the town is, is eye shocking to someone like me at least. But I think at the end of the day, in my experience, developers almost prefer that they still get to maintain complete control over that site.
Do you think that, I mean, you, you mentioned some towns had a, I guess, a smaller fraction of, or they could take a larger fraction of land to be dedicated that were, um, part of floodplain? Would that ameliorate it? Would that help? If I, and what, what percentage have these other towns allowed for floodplains?
The, the ones I talked to didn't have a, did not have a cap. These were, uh, most, uh, so besides our Western Wake County neighbors, the people I spoke with are mostly from out east where I grew up. The people I, I knew personally and just called them and talked to them. And they, there's a lot less, uh, how do I say, detailed regulation and, and thought about these things. Cause there's a lot more land, you're not getting as intensive development. You're getting, um, you're not, you're not really getting them multifamily like we get here. And just overall density is a lot lower. So there, there wasn't, there wasn't a cap on that. But as far as floodplain, things like that, the, the other trade-off, the other concerns I would have But as far as floodplain, things like that, the, the other trade-off, the other concerns I would have is one of the standards I have, we have that, that I really like is that the area to be dedicated has to touch a public right of way. So I think floodplain would be fine if, if we, if the town, you know, knows upfront, it's not the highest quality of land. Part, part of it might not ever be able to be allowed to be developed if it's, if it's additional flood, floodway. It's actually floodplain and, and, or floodplain with floodway or wetlands. But I guess what I'm trying to say is, as long as we have some standard that says there's, there's a public access to it and public right of way, I think that's probably, past that, I think there's a lot of just value considerations as far as what the town wants. I don't think there's a right answer as far as floodway or not.
One other thought that came to my mind was, and I don't know if this is even feasible, but if, if adjoining property developers or close by property developers, if they are able to pool together and carve out a piece of land, that's okay too. As long as, I mean, town doesn't need to be involved in every single one of those. That's what I mean. Is in other words, if you take money, you are now going to go looking, hunting for land, which is going to be hard to find. But on the other hand, if you give them the flexibility of saying, you can partner with other developers in, let's just say, two mile radius. Just using that as an example. And, and if you want to kind of pull together a piece of land that, that the, the communities around it can leverage, so be it. But it, it, it needs to be organically developed through the development community. They need to take ownership of developing a, I would call it a contained neighborhood, right? Where that's walkable neighborhood, contained neighborhood, where basic amenities are available to each other.
Other question on the payment in lieu historically, is there a time horizon by which they have to be used or developed? Or they sit there indefinitely?
Yeah, the, the statutes are very vague on this. There is more case law that I'm not quite as familiar with as far as the payments are intended to be used for the development that I've developed. And a decade, a decade ago, I developed a neighborhood and you never used it. And that was supposed to be for that neighborhood. So the, the statutes are clear about one thing to me at least. The parkland or the payment in lieu has to be used in the general area of the development. Now, within Morrisville, it's, it, we're not as big as Carrier, Raleigh. That could mean almost anywhere in town through some interpretations. There is no specific number that the town has to use it as far as number of years the town has to use that, that money. But, and I, I don't know as far as history, how, how long we've waited to use some of this money. But if it, if it's sitting in a, in a pot the town has for a decade or longer, that kind of makes me uncomfortable as far as just sitting there. Again, it's intended to be used for development, for that parkland and recreation purposes. But I don't, I don't think we have a certain number. We don't have a policy as far as that I'm.
Are we in that position though now where there's a, a pole that hasn't been used in a certain time period?
Not necessarily. I mean, our parkland PIL has gone to some substantial projects, like the Crabtree Hatchet Greenway. Parkland PIL funds went to support that project. And so with the various recreation needs in town, we're pooling from that fund quite regularly. I can't remember how much is left. I'd have to go back to the budget presentation to look. But it, it's a pot that's dwindling as we get built out. And greenways are probably one of the areas that we'd most use to pour.
So challenge is finding the land and if it's dedicated, then actually doing something with it, right? Is there a deal that can be struck on some of these things where you get a bit of both? So you lessen the amount that's required if they develop it out for you?
Yeah, I think, I think the way the, I, I think we could. And I think if we do some amendments, I think we could clarify that even more as far as getting those trade-offs. Yeah.
I mean, I, I like the use of greenways only because that connects everything. So it's kind of easy to say, well, we're applying this to the whole town. You know, I don't know if there's opportunities to do small little sort of pocket parks off of greenways. A lot of times, greenways are obviously in a floodplain or something close to that. But I do like the use of greenways only because it's pretty equitable to the whole community to, to use it for that.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I have just one more side comment. Sorry. Just since we're talking about payment in lieu and this one is 100% for the town, I'm just curious if there's any other standards that are set on developers that reach that almost like 100% or 90% that developers do payment in lieu specifically, like standards that are set upon them? Do they choose the payment in lieu, like affordable housing or?
Oh, gotcha. So we, I'll speak, I'll try to tread softly. I, I think I know that we cannot as a town just require outright affordable housing. Does that sound correct?
Correct. And I'm going to build up your statement to raise something else. They reminded me of another related conversation we had at the town council retreat about just development requirements in general and how they build off of each other and how sometimes that could run contrary to the goal of creating affordable housing. So if we increase tree preservation, there's less land that can be developed. Although we're doing parkland, parkland PIL or, or land dedication and there's some cost there to the development, whether or the other. If you just look on this overhead, if they were required to save all those trees and dedicate land, there's very little space left. And so just the, the compounding impact of development regulation and how that affects the affordable housing goal was just a conversation that came up. And we still have to do stakeholder engagement and outreach with the development community on, if we're talking about tonight. That's something that we're mindful of as part of our conversation.
I think what your broader question was, PIL in general, you know, for various things like roadways. You know, we, we, you know, builders prefer to give those PILs as opposed to building something there.
I said the buzzword affordable housing, but I'm sure that like, God, everyone tackles up, but I am, Sanjay is correct.
It is a broader discussion. And I think we have had this conversation before. It's, it's a trade-off, right? But at the same time, you know, I've never been a fan of PIL for the simple, and there are some areas where it makes absolute sense. But there are other areas where PIL, you know, you, you can have the money, but you can't do much about it given the land prices or for the matter of decisions being made, taking way too long to be made so that the community benefits from it, right? To take his example about PIL for a, a park. I mean, the one behind Beckenridge was, is, was a prime example of it, right? The Beckenridge community was built, 10 years later, the park was still not there. And that was the basis for, you know, big, big uproar in the community because that fund was never utilized for 10 years and it took, you know, unnecessary hard burn to build that, that park. So tho- those are the things that we just need to be mindful about when we do PILs.
Yeah. And one, one thing that I think came out of our council retreat was greenways. Or maybe it was a different set of text amendments we had was greenways. Instead of doing PIL for greenways, let's just go ahead and have them built. There currently might be a greenway to nowhere, but it's, it'll be built, connected to soon enough. So yeah, there, there's a number of, of different PILs as far as transportation costs too.
I want to weigh in since everybody else didn't. My idea of public recreation is a little bit different. So I think that developments could have some flexibility about who their target people are. Because if they're going to have 50% single bedrooms and they're targeting people that are working in a certain industry, their open space is very different. So I can tell you near Fleet Feet, Soul Cycle, the little karate shop, there were people outside doing activities. Some of it's even on Ashtray Turf. Their outdoor space isn't kids playing on a swing. It's, it's young, younger people that are working, that are doing these group activities. That they go out at six o'clock in the morning and they want to roll out their yoga mats in the middle and do that before they go to work. So I still think recreation areas and some of these developments aren't going to just be targeted towards kids or a certain type of demographic that Morrisville is used to. We have to think, the developer is thinking when they design these apartments, who's going to be living there? And they should be able to propose some open space based on who's going to be living there. Even their grill areas are going to be very different than some, certain other communities. They're going to have pergolas, they're going to have nice areas, they might have some beanbag tosses. That's still a public, that can be a public area and be very useful and be fun for people that just don't live in that development and that should count.
I, I totally agree with you. I mean, one of the things that they did in the Park West, is it? Oh, yeah. I get confused between Park East and Park West. They have the ice cream shop with a, you know, what do you call it? The turf laid out and it becomes a gathering place for people to come over there. So it, it, it needs to be, that's why I said, you know, if they can pool land together and build something in between, that would be great as well. I mean, you see all of that in China and other places where in Shanghai, that you again see them doing all kinds of morning exercises in community areas right in the middle of the street. And because that's a big open area that they, they leverage.
Yeah, and I, I think is, I think the one thing we can do as far as if, if immediately as far as staff is we meet with developers before they really get a full site plan and we can always suggest things. We cannot, we can't subjectively say we have to have this here unless our code, you know, the law backs us up. But we can certainly, I think that's definitely the intent, is to try to get people to work together. We're not always successful with that, but, and I think that's definitely the intent. Yeah.
We, we need to get away from the suburbia concept that, I mean, Morrisville is not meant as a town, does not fit that suburbia model. So we really need to compare to how dense cities are, you know, structured. And, but our approach has always been parcel by parcel. As opposed to the street, I mean, the city planning that includes here is where Central Park is going to be and here is where people can contribute, you know, PILs or whatever for that.
Anyone else? I guess you're free. You finally stopped coughing though.
Thankfully, I got some water, so thank you. Okay, that's all I had tonight.
Thank you. So Marty, were there any, I don't see anyone here. Were there any emailed comments?
We had no emails, calls, no people here.
All right, well, I guess staff comments, newsletter?
Sure. Just to go over the newsletter, really from May and June, since we did have a meeting cancellation. We had a few new applications in. New apartment at Dearest Leder Road, so that's the one, saw the rezoning probably a few months back. On Slater, South Side was residential, the North Side office, so that's South Side. They have come in with their, with their site plans, middle. Also received a site plan application for research lab with, with a mix of two other non-residential uses at 510 Watkins Road. So that is the TOD East site, if you're looking at the land use plan. So about 20 acres of, I believe, the TOD East is about 60 acres, so about a third of that property. We continue to work with the applicant long fellows, try and get their plan to mesh up with the TOD plan as best we can. But they are vested under the OI zoning regulations now, even if that zoning does change. So trying to work collaborative with, with them and have been having meetings and are continuing to have meetings with them. And then rezoning application came in for 1624 Wilson Road, looking to rezone some property up there to medium density residential. In terms of other projects that were approved, so Rush Hour Two and Urban Air, and that's a go-kart and indoor skydiving facility. Those were both approved along the McCrimmon Parkway extension. It's on a property just south of the weight competition center. And then the text amendments that Chris presented to you a couple of months ago, there was a marathon list of amendments along McCrimmon, TOD, airport overlay, just a bunch of stuff there. Those are still working their way through the town council review process. Public hearing was continued again until the next meeting on July 13th. Looking like they may act on July 27th, but we'll just have to wait and see when that occurs. And some tweaks being made there to the multifamily spacing requirements along which that's where it focuses about the discussion. And then the access to circulation text amendments that you previously reviewed were also approved back at their G K meeting. A lot going on if this occurred in the last couple of months.
Thank you. So time for board comments. And I don't know if I should bring this up now, we didn't really. So one of the things with the COVID and doing the meeting remotely, we've not been doing an invocation. So I, we, you know, didn't know if we wanted to start one back. I don't know what everybody thought about that. This is not like an official vote, I guess, more just sort of the temperature check. Are people in favor of continuing that or starting it back or not?
I didn't hear what you said.
For an invocation, we, we had not been doing an invocation during the remote meeting phase. And we were wondering if we, what people's thoughts were on starting back and doing that or if people were opposed to it or, or in favor.
I have mixed feelings about it, but, you know, I would say no to start with. But I'm not firmly opposed to it, but I would say no, given that we are a, this is a government body, if you will. And I don't believe that invocation should be part of it. If it is, it needs to be neutral.
So I'll just go, I'll go this way and come back. So Chris, what are your thoughts?
I like having it, but I don't want to read it, so I'll.
Josh?
I have no opinion either way on that.
I'm open to it. I think you can do it in a way that is, is neutral, but no strong feelings one way or the other.
Ken?
I, I agree with Tim, but I also go either way on it.
I mean, I, I'll say I'm a little more than Sanjay. I'm, I'm opposed to it just for the same reasons he brought up. I mean, and you can, you can do it neutral, but yeah, I just, I'm opposed to it. Because there's always, you know, this week, you have a Muslim person coming and there's a Christian invocation or maybe there's a Hindu invocation or whatever. I, I just, I'm not, I've never been a fan of those types of things. But I'm also not so opposed to that. I would be against it if everyone wanted to do it. But it doesn't sound like anyone is strongly in favor either. But I, it's sort of a, you know.
We don't, that's optional to the board, correct?
It is. We did double check with the town clerk and it can be made on a board by board basis. Not all of our advisory boards do do it, an invocation, I believe. Secretary Saunders actually talked to town clerk Smith about it. I, I don't know if you have any information about what boards may do it. But it is part of the rules of procedure that were adopted by the P C D. So if you want to take that off, out of, you know, off, that is absolutely fine. You can make that change at the staff level and just, you know, take that out of that document. We would just need direction to do so.
So I, I mean, I don't hear anyone that's strongly for doing it, so.
I, I will make a motion to take it off the, sorry, the rules.
So like I said, I don't know we're really taking a vote on this, but I, you know, I suppose we could take a straw vote. I, I don't know if that matters or not, but without, without having effect, so.
Okay, we'll go ahead and go through the rules of procedure and give everyone an updated copy. I do believe that they have to be, yeah, their motion tonight would be great or we could actually make a vote on it. But your rules of procedure do need to be adoptable. So an amendment to them would need to have some follow-up as well.
I have no problem making a motion and go from there.
So while we have a motion, do we have a second? That would be to amend the rules of procedure to not require that. So I mean, I don't know if I can second the motion as the chair or not. I'd have to look up Robert Zules to see what that. I'd have to look up Robert's rules to see what that.
I believe you could.
I mean, so I'll second the motion. So we can take a vote. So who would be in favor? I mean, I'm in favor. So we have two, all opposed.
Yeah, I kind of want, yeah, let's think about it. Can we do that? It might be a way to do it, but I get the point.
Well, now, I'm. Right now, we have two in favor, three opposed, so that.
No, in, in, I don't know how it came about here. So if it helps, other boards don't have something as detailed. They make a comment that's prepared by the city, which is passed down. And here I noticed it was different. Some of it was more emotional than others. And so if that's the happy medium, maybe there's some acknowledgement of being a government body doing this, you know.
I mean, I have never understood the purpose of the invocation. What is, what was the purpose behind it? Why do it in the first place? What's the motivation behind it? We all came here to serve the community. We all come in, you know, with the belief that we are doing the right thing. We all agree that we are going to do it with the best of the intentions. So I'm not sure why we need to kind of repeat it for every meeting upfront. What do you gain from it, right?
I think it's a recognition of that, Sanjay. I think it's a small thing, but it's a pause point. We're all coming from different places. And, you know, taking a pause out of the day to kind of, to do that. And so there's just almost a moment where you just recognize that you're, you're helping to do something that's a little bit beyond and putting yourself aside to do this. And it's just that kind of a statement. And again.
I have no problems doing that, right? I have absolutely no problems doing that. My thoughts are around the religious aspects that come into play. Right? If you, if we can, if we can segregate religion and just kind of reaffirm the intent of why we are here, I'm good with that, right? To basically say, hey, we are gathered here to make the best of the decisions we can for the community. That's good enough for me.
Marty, did Town Clerk Smith share with you anything about what boards may or may not go to an invocation? I know he said that not all do.
They don't all, but the town council chooses to. They do not have to do it. They choose to do it. It's not a requirement.
If the people want to continue with it, then I'm all for, in favor of doing it, but we haven't done it for the last year and no one has said, hey, we're not doing this. So I'm not sure that it was, I mean, in all honesty, that big of a deal. But again, I mean, it's, it's just something we either need to start back doing or not. And I just, we just thought this would be a good time to sort of do it in a way that was contemplating what we were doing rather than just sort of not doing it because we didn't do it.
I think you're a point.
We can revisit it next meeting.
And that's fine. I'll just have to get a volunteer to give it next time.
Yeah, okay.
But yeah, we'll work on it. Okay, so we'll leave that till a later date. So I guess, starting down with Josh, any comments?
No, it's good to see everyone's face.
It's hard to recognize people now.
I don't have any comments.
Sanjay?
Like Josh said, you know, this is great to be together. I want to congratulate the staff on the fantastic July 3rd event. And even though we had challenges with the laser show, I would encourage you guys to do that. Fireworks, even though they look pretty, they are environmentally, you know, we need to be at least trying and be environmentally conscious. So maybe next year we'll do a good job of a better laser show. So, you know, let's be all for it.
Tim? Ken? I don't have any further comments either. So having said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Big motion to adjourn.
Tim, and second by Sanjay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.